Thank you as well with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A couple of adjustments. We have Cynthia Behan of Behan Planning and Design and we're gonna put her up first for various reasons, but mostly because we're just nice people.
See, I already told you because of the weather.
Oh, alright, nevermind. Also, I'm gonna pull the approval of bills and claims from the consent agenda just add it to the end because there were some things added and Sally and I need to look at them before we approve them. But other than that, are there any additions? Oh, I'm sorry, and we have two approvals. I guess I would like to add to the consent agenda, it's the same, for expenditures from money raised by the one twenty-fifth, the Christmas tree bonfire. They were approved by the people who raised money, the donors as well, but it requires our board action. Is there any objection to adding that to the consent agenda?
I, I have a lot of things I wanna ask about, so could we just whip through them and not do a consent agenda?
Um, that might slow us down, 'cause you don't have everything objected to, so.
No.
Let's just deal with one thing at a time. Is there, is there an objection to adding this to the, I guess adding this to the bills and claims, 'cause we will be signing them. Is there any objection?
No.
Alright, so I'll just stick with that.
I do have, I think we need to discuss at least briefly the local law we were due to pass tonight about the fracking, based on some things that happened today. That's number nine.
Okay. Which, which number is that? Nine, okay, so we'll pull that from consent?
I have.
And was that, was that the only ones, Stuart?
Yes.
Okay, Sally, what were your?
Okay, um, I never got, is that off the agenda number three?
Do close planning board, that's gross.
Yes, I don't have those. They weren't in the package.
It's, uh, well, that's, we don't usually put those in the packet, but it's a memo, we have the memo from Nancy.
Okay, then that can stay in.
Yeah.
And they're actually at the table. I made copies of the, yeah, the report, and they're at the table for you.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't see.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't have the memo from Nancy in the package?
Right, exactly.
I see, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm saying.
So.
So that one.
Sorry, bear with us one second, folks. Okay, so what was the sec, what was the next one?
The, um, I just have an amendment to number five, and then.
So we'll pull that. Anything that requires discussion, let's pull it, but if it's a matter of asking questions beforehand.
And number nine, the first set of minutes are joint, they don't get acted upon, approved by us, so they go off.
Right, and Stuart's already pulled that from the consent anyway, yeah.
No, no.
And I have an amendment, the minutes of doing work.
That's six, you mean, not nine.
Yes ma'am?
Um, also, the minutes of January ninth, we can't approve them without the town going, please join me.
Six is the minutes.
Oh, those are joint, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I said, they're joint.
Oh, that's what, sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, it, it's six, not nine, January ninth.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
But the twenty-third, I have an amendment, and then, um.
So we'll pull approval for minutes?
Yeah, and then the last one, we just talked about, and so we need to pull that off so that we can get that straight, the referrals and everything.
Well, you could probably.
We just, this, we're gonna refer it anyway, we could, if there's something else you wanted to do, we can just do that. We don't have to talk about referring, 'cause we have to do that legally.
We had talked about referring it to the county, referring it to the planning board, sending it to CBA, have them review it and put it there on our workshop agenda for us to discuss.
None of that has, well, if you, if you see, if you see, I mean, no, that's fine.
Is that any problem with that? Okay, then that, then I don't need that all.
But that's, this is just a referral, so yeah.
I think you can leave the, the minutes on except for the joint one on the night, the rest you can put on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Hmm?
Well, no, 'cause Sally would like to change the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Why, why don't we just go through this?
I'm sorry, wait, hold on, alright, um, Sally, does that, had something else?
I'm, I'm finishing, um, and I, on number ten, I have a question. On one, and not the other.
Okay.
Agreed. I, I bet, I bet we're thinking the same thing.
Um, alright, is there any other, um, that leaves five, six things on this consent agenda? Any problems with those six?
Which six?
I mean, just, I was just gonna say, can you go through which ones?
Two, three, four, seven, eight, and eleven.
Two, three, four, seven.
Mm-hmm.
No problem.
Okay.
Alright. Um, any other additions to the agenda?
I'll move it.
Alright, a second, all in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Thank you, so, uh, well, actually, the public comment first, I'm sorry, but, um, unless you'd like to wait to hear Cynthia's presentation, it's up to you. Anyone here to comment publicly?
They all are here, I need your signature.
Students.
Oh, I'm not, I don't give those till later, I make them suffer first. Um, but yeah, Cynthia, then take it away, please.
No, no, announcement. Don't forget, tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock is the Billion Women Rising event.
Yes.
In New Paltz, at the corner of Main and Plattehill, and it is really an important event for we women to attend. Those men who agree with us may come.
And, any other announcements?
And we'll be, we'll be going to the community center afterwards, um, and I also have an announcement. Um, on Sunday, there's going to be, there are three buses going from New Paltz to Washington DC for a rally against the proposed Keystone XL pipeline. If anybody doesn't know what that is, it would basically be something that would take oil from fracking in Canada and bring it all the way to Texas, going all the way across the United States, and President Obama is considering doing this, and there's going to be three buses, um, there's still room on one of the buses. You can email corvasorora, it's C-O-R-V-A-S-O-R-O-R-A, C-O-R-V-A-S-O-R-O-R-A, at yahoo dot com. Um, there's, I believe that there's stuff online about this, Facebook probably has something, um, it's a ra, it's, it's a monster rally, um, sponsored by three fifty dot org, and there's gonna be three buses leaving around five AM, and then we'll be back around ten or eleven PM. The full price of the bus is thirty-five dollars, but there are reduced costs for those who can't afford it and would like to go, um, and yeah, the more the merrier. It'll be a really fun experience for anyone who has not gone to Washington DC to rally. Yes, you could totally have one in Washington DC, and anyone in the audience can have one as well.
Alright, what's a monster rally?
Yes. Um, it has nothing to do with Lady Gaga, but I wish it did, and I feel sorry for her injury. She's injured and canceled the rest of her tour, and me and my girlfriend's very sad, but a monster rally, I think this needs a really big rally.
Oh, not like werewolves?
No, unfortunately not. No vampires either, sorry.
No monster trucks?
No monster trucks?
I know monster trucks, no, I think it's pretty anti-monster trucks, considering.
Any other announcements? Cynthia?
Okay. Thanks everyone, nice to be here and meet you all. I'm here to talk about a small project that I think came about last summer. I think we were initially talking in accordance to look at this situation on Hasbrook Avenue and in the Peace Park, and ever since we've been sort of starting to move the project forward, working with your engineering consultant, Brener Rios. So, you know, most of what you see here has been, was in discussion with Rich Booth, and, you know, we've, we're kind of, you know, coordinating on this work. So, what we're calling this is a stream daylighting project, it's one of the new strategies coming out for, we're called green infrastructure projects. These are the type of projects DEC likes to see developed now to reduce stormwater runoff and, you know, increase groundwater infiltration. We see this as a real opportunity in this situation to beautify, create a beautiful park element as part of the project. Came about last year, I think, there was a, an issue with, I'm going, oh yeah, there's, um, there was an issue with a collapse of a, um, a storm culvert on the line of Hasbrook. Did I move, no? I may have to work it myself. Alright, so, um, came about, I'm gonna move around this way, Lana, hopefully not blocking view, maybe sit there. Okay, so, um, in the, in the, there was a small collapse in the, in the existing storm sewer pipe along the sidewalk, along the south side of Peace Park right there, thank you. And so, uh, this came about, the idea of, while certainly the pipe needed to be replaced, and Jason and, you know, and others thought that perhaps there was more that we could do here. So, for orientation, you see, you see the Peace Park, this is the village hall where we are right now, and the DPW barrage, Hasbrook Avenue, which is sort of the east-west orientation, and Plattehill Avenue, north-south. Um, I'll just give you a few more, um, just from the aerial view, a few more images that show. Locationally, this is a important pedestrian connection from campus to the downtown, you see the sidewalk being heavily used. On the, um, let's see, this is the east side of the park, you see the slope that occurs, and this is, you know, you're probably pretty familiar with the situation, that's a fairly steep slope right in there, and this is from, looking from the intersection of Hasbrook Avenue to the north. Um, let's see, here's the section where we see the, uh, the storm culvert collapse right in here, and there's been a temporary replacement type of thing where a stone was, was put in place over the sidewalk, you know, and the sidewalk is in this condition right now. You see the condition of existing trees, uh, probably, you know, most of these trees can remain, some really nice tall ones up in the long Hasbrook Avenue. This is the view west, um, this is looking from the DPW entrance driveway to the west, you see, uh, here's the DPW entrance driveway and asphalt type of situation here. The, this existing culvert is undergrounded this, through here, and outlets down in here in these woods right now. So, here's a closer up, you see, uh, Hasbrook Avenue to the west, see the bridge in the background, um, and, you know, existing guardrail and other side conditions here. Um, summer view, apparently there was a couple of parking spaces as part of this, but you can see, you know, the water channelized on the asphalt and then headed down over a slope into the woods. Uh, and here's where finally the pipe outlets, existing pipe outlet on, on, uh, on that west end of Hasbrook Avenue, you see there's a tree right at the outlet. Um, to remove the pipe, we'll have to clean up this area and treat it somewhat as part of the, um, construction project to, you know, remediate this situation, so let's take a look at what the conceptual plans, this is the plan in front of most of you right now. What we're showing is in this eastern hand of Hasbrook Avenue, where, uh, an existing catch basin, uh, well, it's actually existing across the street, and so our, our partner, Richard Booth, says possibly a new catch basin installed at its intersection, which would, you know, pick up a lot of the runoff and take it off, uh, actually connect to the one that's currently across the street, and then just allow that runoff to come out and daylight, which is called, you know, we call this project a daylighting, um, and we would bring it out into an area where that slope is steep on this eastern side, and, uh, what we would have, uh, a small basin and perhaps a water feature here, like a waterfall, so that, um, you know, it's a beautiful and attractive, uh, you know, park component. The water would then flow down in, in a pretty, you know, uh, easily graded stream bed type of thing, and a shallow pool in a, at the basin, at the bottom, where it's very shallow. And then at this point, at, at this point, there would be an infiltration basin, and that would be where water can enter the groundwater, the lowest part, part of the system, create, you know, do a little subsurface excavation, add some stone, and allow the water to go into the groundwater right here. Then we would pick up in an overflow structure and put it back into a pipe. So, um, and then on the west side, I guess I, what I should do is progress the slide, so you see this in a little bit closer up here. Again, we have the catch basin, an outfall and waterfall type of feature, small basin, we would, uh, think that maybe some of the paths, we propose some path systems that may make, you know, a, a park experience a little more enjoyable, uh, cut across the slopes rather than go across the steepness here, and just create opportunities for some planting and, you know, give it a nice aesthetic. Most of these are the existing trees to be doing in this area, a couple of new trees over here. Um, and then here would be where the outlet structure is on the west side, so, you know, hopefully in most situations, you wouldn't have a lot of water entering the outlet structure, most of the water would be re-entering the ground, which is, you know, helps with, like, control of downstream areas. So, when you do have a storm and this area has some water in it, it would hold for a while, and then enter the groundwater slowly. Where, you know, where we have the overflow structure is when the water gets really high, we would overflow onto the streets or anything, so we put it back into the system right there, and that's just, just the way it is right now. Questions?
What exactly is an overflow structure?
It's, it's, it's like, you know, it's sort of like a little grate at a certain elevation, allows the water to flow in, just like what, what might do in your sink, you know?
Oh, okay, sure.
So you have something like that, that, you know, allows it to re-enter through a pipe into the system, yeah.
Beating into the pipe, okay.
And here's the, what the concept now is for the west side of, of, uh, this, uh, area, what we were, um, looking to do is also daylight the stream on this side of the driveway, closing one of the driveways, which is one of the concepts, right here you have two, a driveway opening that we're suggesting you could close, and, you know, that might help to, you know, uh, end confusion at this entry or exit, and it eliminates a lot of pavement and directs the flow of water, allows it to flow in a, you know, along the, in the grass, and then into the stone swale. So, now, that is one part of the concept right here that might help with, you know, confusion at the entrance ways, you just make one entrance, make it easy to get in and out, and, um, and allow a little more infiltration in this moaning area. So here's the outlet structure again, when we put it in the catch basin, we have, we let it out again over here, we have a store, uh, a sanitary sewer crossing, and, um, Mr. Booth wanted to, you know, get this culvert beyond that sanitary sewer crossing, so we didn't have any conflict with water in the sewer. So we're opening it up again, entering it into a stone swale, where we would allow it to infiltrate, we'd try to slow it down with plantings, and, you know, the stone itself, so that water could again, um, come into the swale and then infiltrate into the ground. This point is the current and existing outlet structure that I showed you a photo of, this is the existing tree that would have to come out to do the construction in that area, and we would try to do a little cleanup work, because right here is where you start, uh, having a bit of a cascade of the flow of water. So we probably have to put some stone and slow down the flow, and just keep it from eroding the embankments along here. So that's what's envisioned at this end of the pipe, is just a little bit of cleanup, slowing down and keeping erosion at bay, where there is quite a bit of topo, you know, topography going down the top here. So that's really the idea of what we're talking about in this concept, it's, uh, according to Rich Booth, the kind of thing that we could easily, will be incorporated into this drainage project that's ongoing, that he has pretty much ready to go out to bid, so, um, he sees this as an easy addition to that project. Um, these are some of the reasons why stream daylighting is beneficial, you know, you have aeration that occurs when you, especially when you drop water over a fall, that waterfall might be as much as a five-foot-high waterfall in the park. Now, you have natural sunlight, and, uh, some sedimentation and settling occurs, and this important one of infiltration into the groundwater with groundwater recharge, um, reducing flooding volumes downstream, so that's how you take something that really would outlet at a high rate of volume and take it out of, of the system, of the storm sewer system, and put it into the ground again.
I have a question. Um, the, the area that is currently, uh, part of the entrance and exit, there have been sunflowers planted there and removed from there because of visibility issues, and it's been, it's been talked about that cars are not allowed, you're, we're not allowed to plant the sunflowers there because cars can't see pedestrians coming and going, um, and I, the tree, but, I mean, I, I'm all about planting new trees, um, but the tree that would be there, I would imagine, would do the same thing as, well, even more so than the sunflowers that had been there.
Well, for the long part, it's a street tree, it's, you know, it's, and its location can be moved for, you know, any type of visibility, but the idea of showing street trees is to provide shade on the pavement, this is the south side of this parking lot, where I noted the moaning area, that was specifically moaned for the visibility, so, you know, oftentimes you look around the corner, you see a street tree's there in the way, it's just the trunk, you know, and then you have the foliage up high, so does that shading, cooling of the pavement and, you know, but it certainly could be moved if we're, you know, if at this conceptual phase it's just shown as a tree, but it can be moved anywhere, or not included.
Or close that off completely?
Uh, this involves.
Is that, is that not?
I don't think so.
Is it? Why not?
So have no driveways going on the back of the board?
Yeah.
Well.
That would make that area significantly safer if that is where somebody got hit by a car this past fall.
Yeah, but, but then all of that traffic, all there's gonna have to shoot out onto Plattehill Avenue through that narrow, I mean, I think a traffic engineer wouldn't like that very much.
Doesn't bother me.
Well.
I think closing off one of the entrance waves is a very good idea.
It's 'cause you're walking.
Yeah.
No, I thought she said closing both of them.
No.
Well, yes.
That is what she said.
That's what she said.
Yes. No, no.
Closing all of them.
Are we actually closing them too?
Yeah, well, there, there is a second entrance way, which is on the other side of the parking lot, this is one entrance way,
Right.
And this entire thing should be closed, no?
I, I wouldn't agree with that, but.
I mean, because people speed through the village hall parking lot and use it as a thoroughfare.
Not only that, but when you're going up that hill, that's where the visibility issue is, like coming up, and now we're adding people, I guess, you know, when you're coming out a little closer, um, yeah, that one, you're making the left turn heading up that hill, and that's a pretty busy intersection too,
Mm-hmm.
with people, with foot traffic, so.
This actually, this opening goes through the parking lot, is that what you think?
Yeah, right, yeah, and further up is like, you know, people are crossing at the top of that hill.
Yeah.
Oh, wait.
Right.
Um, and I think that's actually where the accident was.
Well, actually, it was, it was where the, it was where the, the crosswalk, if needed, is shown, and boy, is it needed, that's exactly.
It was right there.
Oh.
Oh, one hundred percent.
That's exactly where the accident occurred, uh, exactly where someone was, was critically injured, yes.
There is an option also to narrow, you know, Hasbrook right here, it's shown a little bump out right here, but, you know, when you narrow, uh, wide swaths, it, it tends, when it's wide, people go faster, and so if you narrowed it, you, you know, you would, you would have the opposite effect of nar, narrowing would slow people down.
Sure.
Right.
I think this, this, you know, entrance way, even though people are making the left here, they would slow down, it's a sharper left, you know, and so I think they would have to slow down a bit. I eased the curve right here, thinking, you know, there may be trucks that come in and out from the DPW, a wi, a wider curve right here, but, you know, that's, those, there are traffic coming strategies that also could be incorporated very little cost at this point.
There is currently in Peace Park, an outside theater.
Okay.
Is, I can't tell by the scale whether we're into it or not.
I was wondering about that.
That was in the first, that was shown on the first slide, Cynthia, um, it's a, a modest.
Yeah.
And slight amphitheater arrangement, yes.
Right, but it is yours.
Oh, I thought those are flower planters.
Yeah.
No, I'm serious, I think there's, you have to get in, there's the board, you see?
No, it's, it's sit on, watch this.
Well.
There are old flower planters in that building.
So is it, is it the two little planters up high on the hill?
They're not planters.
That's the impetus.
They're seats.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that actually, to go back one more if I can.
I know, it's very far.
This, that is the area that this would be located, so, you know, we'd have to either move it this direction
Yeah.
Okay.
or incorporate it into this hillside here, I mean, it, I, I didn't really know that's what it was either, so we can incorporate it into the design if I.
I imagine.
Well, we have to, we would have to have a discussion as to what to do.
Yeah, but cert, I, I will, I imagine that, um, that Cynthia could incorporate that if the village would like, and even make it more recognizable and, uh,
Yeah.
more user-friendly, um.
Or for flowers, especially if there's a path there.
Especially if there's a path there. Um.
Well, that's something we have to discuss.
Okay.
Because, I mean, people do need to.
From the, from the new design, it looks like.
Another stone bench.
There's like that trunk taken out, like on Hasbrook Avenue on the west side.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it looks like we've now just made that a straight line, is that, am I seeing that right?
Right, I mean, right in here, where there's an opening currently right here, right now.
Well, to, yeah, but.
Oh, 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 yes, yeah, right here, you saw the guardrail in one of the pictures, yes, so all of this is in pavement right now,
Right. Right.
and so all of this would become green and would be where this swale is located, right?
That's right.
We probably have to extend this guardrail, at least first look by Mr. Booth, he thought the guardrail would have to come up a little bit,
Hmm.
and, you know, depending, I think, on the grades as we go through the questions.
Thanks. Thanks. The other question I have, what Jason and I had early on talked about, and I think everybody agreed, that is maintenance-free as it can be, but you don't show any suggestion of landscaping around this.
On the, on the actual swale.
On the actual neanderthal.
Yeah, I know, uh, it probably, um, I think our focus was up in this area where there might be, you know, a, sort of a highlighted feature up in here and, you know, also sort of to create a little buffer from the street, and so that was kind of a focus for us. We're also, we're showing, I didn't really describe landscape thoughts or plans, but, um, in this area, we thought maybe we could put, you know, a sign, um, if, if needed, you know, Peace Park or other interpretive sign, because I, you know, I, I'm not sure if the grant requires an interpretive signage or not from the DEC, so, I mean, there was a possible sign location, and so plantings around that, but, you know, realizing and recognizing budget constraints, I'm, I'm a little bit like thinking small plantings, but nothing major type of thing, so it looks more or less like a stream, you know?
That's what I was gonna suggest, all of this seems to me eventually will take away the visible beauty of the stream itself.
Uh.
I mean, part of this is to be a visible quality of life issue, um, and if we have so much planting here, and I don't know whether this is the time to ask, um, it seems to me we're defeating, in a way, the concept of the, the visual.
Connection through the park, that's a good point, I think it's, uh.
Right.
But only from that one point of view, right?
No, but.
Only from standing up here.
No, well, but that's where most of us will be standing, most of us will be walking up here and to look down over. I, I would think we would want that visually.
It's hard to tell with the topography, not only have tall plants.
I know, it's.
Yeah, there was thought to be some street, you know, again, some shade trees and some understory, so she's right, it probably would stream from that direction a little bit,
Something to think about.
and I thought that might be.
You'd also be able to hear it though, so there'd be, there would still be drones too.
Yeah, I guess I was seeing it more as visual, you know, it's being seen from inside the park.
Right.
And so if it's not that kind of thing where you would want the background to it, you'd rather have the view into it, we could sort of move that, that kind of thing around.
I think, yep.
Hmm.
Sure, I mean, I lo, I like that, I, I mean, my concern, I guess, would also be visibility at the top, because that's where, you know, if you're coming up Hasbrook Avenue, and someone's coming, you know, that.
Oh, from a driving, from a.
Right, a driving or even, you know, a pedestrian coming up, a simple bicycle coming up, so, I mean, that would just, 'cause you, you know, you want the corners to be kind of clear.
I mean, I think that.
Although I do, I do like that it's coming from the street, uh, from like the forest stream, I think, and it's like cool aesthetic, but.
I, I think you wanna be especially careful of that, because the sun in the early morning from the east, it's blinding if you're going up Hasbrook, so
Oh.
those trees, if they're potentially blocking any pedestrians, it's very, very dangerous.
It really is.
The trees at the corner then.
Yeah.
And Cynthia, I don't know whether you realize it, but continuing Brian's point, the Hasbrook Avenue traffic has the right of way. You're supposed to stop on Plattehill, and you're supposed to stop as you're coming down Plattehill, but the traffic moving up west.
It has no stop sign.
Right, I mean, east has the right of way, so that could get very tricky, because lots of people don't realize that that lane does have the right of way.
Yeah, it's actually that, that could partly be helped by a, a stop line, um, and it might be great for the state to get its revenues from moving violations, but you don't, when, you don't always see that stop sign, and the stop line is a very good visual cue for drivers.
Coming down.
Yeah, and it's not, it's, it's not there, and, um.
So we would need to work on integrating that, so it's, you know, it's.
Yeah, I mean, and this is kind of separate, but I've often, as a, only as a pedestrian, um, because I don't drive, it's, there's no way to cross from the west side of Plattehill Avenue onto the east side of Plattehill Avenue, where there's the, there's the crosswalk basically across Hasbrook, but then.
I mean, the street, let it open.
Right, well, then you have to walk.
You have to do it all the way up.
Right, exactly, but people regularly cross right where that stop sign is, if you're coming, if you're going towards Main Street on Plattehill Avenue, and you're going towards the campus, and it seems to me that it would be good for us to put a crosswalk in there, and I like the idea of the stop line, because that is so visual, because the stop sign that's there, I watch people roll through that all the time, and I've been in cars with people who don't even see it.
Yes, it's, it's actually, it's a mow some trees, but.
I think that idea brought.
I'd like to suggest that this is, um, um, we're actually getting into something that as Jason and I, as Jason and I started to discuss this. As Jason and I started to discuss this project, we started the talk also about other opportunities. And that's exactly the way the conversation is going now. Um, this is an excellent first phase, there's a lot we could do with this area, um, in, in terms of its safety and its aesthetics, so, um.
Right.
Yeah, but don't forget, we have confined.
Right, for this, that's why, I mean, I've, um.
It's clean.
Yeah, it's, uh, but not, well, so now with this, what Kurt's talking over, confined more with time. Because a lot of the things we were, Kurt and I were initially sketching out included, you know, making the Tricor Hasbrook parking lot and, um, you know, brick stamped crosswalk all across, you know, across the street. Narrowing the street to the state, uh, lane, uh, with minimums of eleven feet per lane, which would give us enough on a Hasbrook to cut, you know, maybe a twenty-five percent of the road. Um, which we could put down bike lanes, we could put down all sorts of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
But all of this stuff is just, um, excavation, which our DBW can do, and painting, which they can do. And soon he's got a, a, a brick stamper, I think, that, or has access to one or something. We figured out that a lot of this can just be done if we can find the time, or, you know, um, prioritize it in the spring when other things are being done. Um, so that would, we didn't need to fold in some of this into the project because we could just do it for the cost of materials. And then the college is even offering us some fill to put this down.
That's for the twenty thousand.
No, that's separate, that's just, John doesn't need it and he's, it's in a pile and, you know, and we've had offers like that here and there for stone benches and, uh,
Separate?
of local homeowners of Corey who's doing a name stone if we needed, Chum Gum Rock for, for various parts of this. So, um, but yeah, there's a lot we could do in-house that doesn't cost, we don't need to go out and cop to bid for.
That was the conclusion that we came. And that we've, we've, we've done, I think, as much as, as we can with this, if you want to refer to it as a first phase. And there's, this would, this will actually, I think, um, stir peo- stir people's thoughts about a second or, or an additional phase after that.
Cause we've, like, Kurt, you have ideas about things, ways we could redesign our parking lots and things we do to the property we have here.
Yeah.
Places we might expand the park in other directions, you know, if we don't need certain, certain areas or whatnot, but that's again, it would, it's a longer conversation.
That's right, I mean, this, we've come a long way to.
But I'm more interested in this.
Yes.
And I'm more interested in doing it right. I'm not interested in phasing this, this particular project.
No, and I wasn't actually.
I'm interested in doing it conceptually the way we agreed upon and doing it as beautifully as we can. And one of the things we talked about was perhaps seeking donated Chum Gum Rock to line the stream when we're not showing any of that here.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and I think that was part of the discussion.
It definitely was, I remember.
You know, not, and, and, you know, seeking the garden club's advice and input, because they have master gardeners. And, you know, making this a beautiful vision, I mean, that's what I'm hoping it will be. So, I think we need to think carefully about all of the foliage up here.
The fine grain stuff, the fine grain things, yeah.
Hmm. Yeah. I think we really need to have a vision, a complete vision.
Well, so the, how does?
I like complete vision.
Okay, well, my, this is good information and good feedback. So, uh, you know, in terms of this concept, we can show some revisions to it and, you know, describe it in more detail, I think. And, you know, maybe keep you in the loop as to what, what needs to be.
And if we're gonna seek donated rocks, it would be nice to carry that theme over again.
Hmm.
And really make it outstanding.
Yeah. I mean, I know, I know we're in disagreement here, but I really would like to see this clo- closed and not have traffic be able to come through here.
None at all?
Yeah.
Hmm. Yeah, see, I don't know whether legally that is considered Mohawk Avenue. If that isn't in fact.
You mean Tricor, you mean Tricor?
Tricor, yeah, it would be Tricor.
Tricor.
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure that that isn't legally considered Tricor.
Hmm.
We need to find that out.
How will we find that out?
Blue should be able to.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that's not too difficult to look into, although.
Do you have any ideas or no?
Um, I don't know offhand, um, but I, I would say, and I'd reiterate what, what we were saying about this project has, has come a ways to get to this point. And I actually wouldn't want to, um, I think we should plan for those things, but I wouldn't want to disturb this, this project, um, as it, as it's come along. Um, uh, but I would like to, to look at those issues while we pursue this and repair our, I'm sorry, replace our culvert with, um, uh, with a daylighted stream feature. I think it's, I'd love to have the, uh, the authorization to.
I think it's a neat idea.
I, well, while we're discussing it, I, I agree we should move ahead with the first part of this. But I, I, I would see a horrific traffic jam problem if you closed that off completely. So, you have four rows coming together there, it would cause so much people having to go back the other way and, you know, I think that might look nice. But it, it's gonna cause traffic, severe traffic issues. That's not what we have before us right now, but, but while you're looking into that, I, I think, I would think that would be a pretty bad idea, but.
Right. I agree, Stuart, especially as, especially as this intersection.
I don't take offense.
Especially as this intersection exists. In other words, if we were to attack the poor orientation and the extraordinarily long, um, approximately eighty-five-foot crosswalk there. In other words, these things would need to be looked at together. So, you're right that, I wouldn't, um, I don't think I'd, I'd propose something in and of itself to, to close that area off without, without looking at the area and the traffic, as you said, around it. Um, but at least it's something that, that we can, um, look forward to doing after, after this particular discrete project.
Cause you're already closing off one of the two avenues that are there, so that's okay, but I think closing them both off, you're gonna get yourself into a corner there.
Right.
Actually. I'd suggest that.
I mean, it seems to me that if we're going to be doing this, shouldn't we just do it?
You may not take a step further and.
Yeah.
Well, you're the only one who supports it right now, right now.
Well, that, that's a, that's a. That's the problem.
What?
You're the only one who supports the idea right now. Maybe it needs more work before we decide to move forward.
No. What it need, I think what it needs is to find out whether it's legal to do it. Because it really is a continuation, but then it requires an amendment on the approval of the bottom line of the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, now, we're just talking about the Villatoll property right here that we're in. Yeah, Aaron?
Yeah, it's time to re-agree. It's tied, not by due to this plan, but the, the Platicville intersection, as a resident, I drive from the pool every night and it's still confusing. I've lived here my whole life, of where to stop and that you're through the street and there's people crossing at night, like. And Tim was saying, the morning, the glare, I don't know, something, just for the future, I think something needs to be done to improve safety and clarity on the intersection.
Absolutely.
But, Aaron, inference, that is not a part of the original proposal.
I said it's not a good idea, as a resident, it's with you.
Yeah, I think it's certainly something to think about and crosswalks painted, I think, at all, all intersections at that top of the hill would be a good idea. But for what we're doing now, I'd like to move concept approval and the authorization to get bids.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, yeah, so, I mean, what we're looking at, the overall cost of the project or, and what, what is that looking like? Or really, we would just have to, learn to bet it out and see what happens?
That's basically what it comes down to.
I think that, um, my understanding was Richard Booth was going to, you know, if we had the concept approval, we'd know a little bit more of what's involved in this project. So, we can move forward and maybe get some cost estimating done, so that you get a little bit better idea, um, before, you know, before bidding.
He, he, he gave that to us when we did all of this initial approval.
With all of this, okay. Okay, so he must be, we must be within budget there because he hasn't said anything to me about this concept being extreme or out of budget, so.
And he knows. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And he knows what the budget is and he, Jason did a lot, with along with Kurt, did a lot of budget estimating.
Okay.
And it, you know, the, the goal of the board was to come in under what it would cost to replace the culvert itself and its sidewalk. And the mayor did that, that's why I have moved it. And I think we ought to go out for bid and see if the bids come in as we wish. And you understand some of the things there.
Right, so on, so on the lines of concept approval, meaning like you'll come back with a second plan or a second, is that, is that how this is gonna work?
I, well, so what I was thinking.
We've never had a designer come to us before, so.
Okay, so, um, what I was thinking is.
Do you want to do my lawn?
So, what I was thinking was that we're moving the concept, I can develop the concept a little bit more, you know, and I think Rich Ruth is going to be doing the engineering of the concept. So, as he gives me something solid to work from, I'll rework a planning plan and, and maybe work with you and come back, you know, and show you a little bit more of what the concept is developing into. Hearing what you are interested in and some of the concerns you brought up.
And we can be in contact with the mayor and the planner fee clause, there is the potential of donations for some of the things that we're hoping for.
Okay, okay.
And so, we need to know that.
And Rich has that information too.
Yes.
I just want to ask, because I will drop this if nobody is in favor of this whatsoever. But if this is not, not a continuation of Tricor, would people be friendly to closing this off completely?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't see.
Aside from you, Stuart.
I won't.
I mean, I, I think it's an interesting thought, I think it's something that's worth thinking about. I obviously don't know what the impact will be of, you know, all the people who would be coming out of that side and now coming out of Platicville Avenue. You know, and then, let's say they have to get to the west end of town, making the left, and then being at that Platicville-Bain Street intersection. Like, what, what that's gonna do with the flow of traffic? I mean, they could also make a right and then another right, but, you know, I, I'd be interested in looking into it.
Yeah.
I just, I think we'd have to see like more what it would mean.
Yeah, I agree.
But I don't disagree, but please keep in mind that this has been a prolonged discussion and that would be a cost add-on. Okay?
Though it is also something we might go and do in-house if it shows that there's not any impacts to it, you know?
And it's small. If there's no impact to it, then I would be supportive of it.
And I have a couple of questions written down from the board that I can look into, but I'd like to do so separate from this because, again, it's, it's evolved to such a point that I think it's, um, it's a very worthwhile project, and I think it will pave the way for, um, for.
Unpave the way.
Uh, thank you.
Unpave.
Unpave the way.
I'm gonna have to take that out of my repertoire of cliches, um, but at that point, I think, um, I think a lot of people would see, um, the potential. And I mean, our, our residents, in other words, as they, as so many people walk past, um, Peace Park.
They really do.
On a regular basis.
That's why I wanted to open it up visually.
Yes, and, and.
You like that?
I did, yeah.
All I am hoping.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming.
All in favor?
I, I.
Okay. Daylight the way to, uh, daylight the way for the.
I would like. I would like.
Yeah.
I would like to move that we take a very short executive session with the purposes of diversity and then come out. So, then, our dear Mr. Yenser, can you go home and have dinner?
Yes.
And do we need him?
To what, does the board, we want the chief in with us?
Do we, do we need?
Huh?
I don't. I don't.
I have no idea.
I, I was asking whether, the mayor asked if we needed to come in for an executive session with us, and I don't.
I think. No?
I mean, it's up to you.
I'm, I'm out of a question.
I'm, I'm here just in case you need me.
All right, but take you with us then.
I mean, that's.
Let's go in first and then ask if we have a question.
Might as well just do it.
All right.
I don't have a problem. Do you have a problem? You wanna have.
Just go in first, let's go in first.
Yeah.
All right. I need a second?
All second, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
We'll be right back, folks, and yes, I'll sign your thing if you want to.
I can sign, please.
You can sign them, they're good enough.
Okay, okay, cool, if you need.
Okay.
Yeah, we probably want a sec, just, I gotta.
Okay.